Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of March 21st, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have all of you here. We have some special guests, some students from Mr. Rodriguez's political science class. Welcome. Where are you? Somewhere out there. Thank you for being here. And then from Troop 47, Scout Leader Robert Green. We have a scout there. Thank you for being here. And then we have a whole row of students right up here from the Jakara Movement. They're going to be speaking later, and they'll tell you about their schools. But they did some wonderful things this last weekend. And at this time, Pastor Don Vertrand, who's the pastor of Generational Care at Resurrection Church, is going to offer the invocation. It's been a pleasure for me to partner with his church. It was recently a merger between Calvary Bible and Hinge Point. And so now they're reaching all generations. And then following the invocation, Kimberly Marquez, who's a senior at Bakersfield High, will lead us in the pledge. Kimberly is our distinguished young woman of California. So from Bakersfield, she represented us at the state level and won, and it now is going on to nationals in the summer to Mobile, Alabama, and will be representing Bakersfield and our wonderful state in the largest high school scholarship program for young women. She's one of 32 high school seniors selected for Four Dimension Dream Builders Program. And I had the pleasure of watching her Dream Builders Team project being selected as Best in Class just a couple of days ago, educating others about human trafficking. She's also an avid dancer. And so at this time, Pastor Don, would you please come? Do you all please stand?
Thank you, Mayor Go, for the invitation. Let's pray together. Our loving heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings, especially today, Lord, just the rain. What a blessing that is, that nourishes our land. We thank you for that. Father, reminded in the Scriptures that the citizens ought to obey all governing authorities since you place them in their place for the purpose of peace and order and justice. And there is no authority except from you. Father, we thank you. Because of that, we pray for our mayor, for our city council members as they assemble tonight. And I'm asking that you would be gracious to grant them wisdom to govern amidst the heavy responsibilities that they carry. I pray for the agenda that is set before them tonight, to accomplish what is in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Bakersfield. Give them a passion to seek justice and righteousness, the ability to work together in harmony even when they may hold opposing views, and accomplish here tonight, Father, first and foremost, that which would please you and would benefit those who live in and work here in this beloved city of Bakersfield. And we ask this in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Don.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Pastor Don. You may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. And in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to receive or send electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed at other times of the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, we have a proclamation to Matt Damian, President of the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County, declaring National Boys and Girls Club Week in Bakersfield during the week of April 9th through the 13th, 2018.
Bring your team up. Well, welcome. It's a joy to get to see how you serve the boys and girls of our wonderful community. And you are making a difference in investing in their future. You're making a difference in the after-school care and nurturing them. And what a wonderful fundraiser you recently had with Laura Bush. Just wonderful. And so it is my honor to be able to issue this proclamation. Whereas the 49 Boys and Girls Clubs in Bakersfield provide services to almost 6,000 young people annually promoting academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship. And whereas Boys and Girls Clubs in our city help to ensure that our young people are occupied by offering them a safe and supportive refuge, one that provides quality programs. And whereas Boys and Girls Clubs in Bakersfield will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week 2018 along with 4,000 clubs and more than 2 million young people nationwide. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2018 through April 13th, 2018, as Boys and Girls Club Week in our city, and call upon all citizens to join in recognizing and commending the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County for providing comprehensive and effective services to the young people in our community. And it's my honor to be able to present this to the President of the Board. Thank you so much for being here. And then go ahead and introduce your colleagues, and then we'll take a picture.
All right. Outstanding. Thank you so much, Mayor Go.
Go ahead.
This is Maggie Kouchine and Linda Solinger with the club. So thank you very much for having me. And in honor of National Boys and Girls Club Week, thank you for your support, and thank you, council members, for your support of the club. And I've seen some of you at fundraisers and events, so really appreciate that support. In honor of National Boys and Girls Club Week, we have a bunch of great events going on from the 9th into the 13th. And we've got different events at different clubs inside of the city. So I would encourage all of you to, if you haven't come and take a tour of the clubs or participated in that particular part of the operation, come and take a tour. We'd love to have you, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments from you?
Yes.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
A proclamation to Jennifer Scott, Referral Consult Coordinator, and Erin Markovitz, Donation Development Coordinator, for the One Legacy Foundation, declaring DMV Donate Life California Month in Bakersfield during April 2018.
Is anyone here from Donate Life? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and present this anyway. So it is an honor that we are able to celebrate those who have given life to others. And whereas more than 114,000 individuals nationwide are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, here you are. And on average, 20 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, and at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors, and a single individual's donations of organs can save up to eight lives. And donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. And whereas a single blood donation can help three people in need of blood, and whereas over 14 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donate Donor Registry. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Donate Life California Month in our city, and encourage all Bakersfield residents to check yes when applying or renewing their driver's license or ID. It's my privilege to be able to present this to you, Erin. Congratulations. Thank you so much for all of your service. Go ahead and say a few words, and then we'll take a photo together.
Oh, great. So thank you, Mayor Go, for that outstanding proclamation. And most of us register to be organ donors through the Department of Motor Vehicles, and One Legacy is glad to partner with the DMV to provide education and materials to their staff to help them answer the questions that we have when we go and want to register there. And we also engage the community through other activities throughout the year. Last year was a record year as far as Kern County goes in the terms of number of lives saved through organ donation. 93 organs transplanted was a new record for us. And then organizationally wide, we had about 493 donors, I believe, resulting in thousands of lives saved through organ transplant. So we're so happy to engage city officials who are supportive of what we do and are grateful for this proclamation.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. One more step. There you go. One, two, three. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to Chris Hewat, Assistant City Manager, representing the City Manager's Office.
Well, what an honor it is to be able to celebrate our 18th consecutive year in receiving this award from the Government Finance Officers Association for this prestigious Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for fantastic budget preparation. And this is, we're among just kind of a few groups that have had this distinguish, this distinction of so many consecutive years. So Chris, it's my honor. Chris Hewat, thank you for all of your efforts and your team. And it's my honor to be able to present this to you. And please address our group.
Thank you very much. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, it is a pleasure to be before you again this year. We did receive the Distinguished Budget Award from GFOA. The award is bestowed upon a very select few of cities, counties, and special districts throughout the nation. And the award recognizes these jurisdictions that put together a budget document that meets a bunch of different criteria, including thoroughness, readability, and comprehensiveness. And there's about 27 different criteria that these reviewers look at, and you have to rank in a certain category to be able to receive the award. So this award is really a reflection of all the work that our team does behind the scenes, all of our departments, all the business managers, department heads, the budget team, and specifically Randy McKeegan, the Assistant Finance Director, who helps put together, along with our office, the actual budget document. But it's really a team effort. Also gone above and beyond, actually, and as you know, launched the Open Budget Platform, which provides an enhanced level of budget transparency for the city, and that recently won an award through KernCog in the category of innovation. So we're very happy to continue to provide our budget information in a bunch of different ways that meets these different thresholds for awards. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have some people here who are on the team. Raise your hand, and let's give them a hand. Come on. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, before I read the next item, I would like to announce that staff has requested that any decision on Item 9B on tonight's agenda be postponed. While the public will have the opportunity to comment on the item tonight, speakers may wish to wait to provide comments until the item returns to the council for consideration. The item will be re-noticed for a future date. The next item is Public Statements.
Thank you. At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to our clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. So if you're here for hearing Item 9, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when that item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, first public speaker, please.
Mayor, we have received six speaker cards, five regarding one subject, one regarding a separate subject. The first five speakers this evening will be speaking regarding the Sikh community in Bakersfield. And the first speaker is Gurjit Khur.
Please introduce yourself, and go ahead.
Good evening, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Gurjit Khur, and I'm a student at Independence High School. I'm a proud member of the Sikh Punjabi community of Bakersfield and pride myself in the ethnic diversity of our city. But I wish I saw ethnic diversity celebrated throughout our city. I encourage and push for our city council member, Mr. Chris Parlier, to support the proposal of a park name change that has been brought forward to him and his ward from the Sikh youth community of Bakersfield. We have proposed a renaming of Stone Creek Park to Jiswan Singh Kalada Park. Home to one of California's most diverse and dynamic communities, southwest Bakersfield is a hub for many old and new residents. Stone Creek Park is a neighborhood hub, bringing together diverse populations of the city, especially residents of both Ward 1 and Ward 7. Named after an early housing development, the Stone Creek Park name is hardly in sync with the changing demographics of the city. To honor a human rights hero, we propose changing the name to Jiswan Singh Kalada Park. It is my belief that the City of Bakersfield acknowledges and celebrates its diversity, and this is an exceptional opportunity to celebrate our diversity. As an MLK Junior Park exists in communities across our nation, we seek to emulate this honoring of its human rights and its advocates. In recognizing the City of Bakersfield and its residents, Jiswan Singh Kalada's life is a symbol of hope for all that care about human rights, dignity, truth, and justice. We, the Sikh youth, are so excited for this initiative and welcome this conversation with our elected officials. Thank you for your time. Waigurjika kalsa, vaigurjiki fatah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Harleen Kar.
If you're speaking, why don't you come to the front row so we can get in and out quickly? Welcome. Please go ahead.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Harleen Kar, and I am a student at Stockdale High School. I am here in support of changing the name of Stone Creek Park to Jiswan Singh Kalada Park. Jiswan Singh Kalada was a human rights activist from Punjab in India. When Punjab entered a dark period during the 1990s, Jiswan Singh made a vow to the families of his colleagues that had been unjustly killed to discover the truth. He was dedicated to finding evidence of misconduct and human rights abuses. He fought both for the victims and their families, as well as was committed to having their stories told, no matter the consequences upon him. He fought in India's legal courts for justice and took the case of the wrongfully killed to the people's courts throughout the world, including the Canadian Parliament. His work was widely heralded by the Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch. In 1995, the same forces that had killed so many innocents picked him up from his home, tortured him, and murdered him with impunity. In honoring someone who has been coined like the Martin Luther King Jr. of the Sikh community, we seek to honor the legacy of Shahid Jiswan Singh Kalada in renaming Stone Creek Park. Contrary to speculation, Jiswan Singh Kalada is not a controversial individual in Sikh history and the community. Anyone who upholds human rights can see that he gave his life for the most noble cause, revealing the unjust killings of a community, being far from controversial. Jiswan Singh Kalada's life is a symbol of hope for all that care about human rights, dignity, truth, and justice. Naming a park in its honor preserves that legacy and celebrates the values that all of Bakersfield's residents hold high. The Punjabi community is nearly unanimous in desiring this, and we believe that all residents in Bakersfield would be honored upon learning of its history. We, the Sikh youth, are so excited for this initiative and welcome this conversation with our elected officials. Thank you for your time. Waigurjika kalsa, vaigurjiki fatah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ramanjit Kar. Good evening, city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. My name is Ramanjit Kar, and I am a student at Independence High School. I am speaking in front of the council in support of renaming Stone Creek Park to Jiswan Singh Kalada Park. This would be groundbreaking for not only the Sikh community, but it would actually be groundbreaking for the City of Bakersfield and truly being a city that values human rights, since the City of Bakersfield has recognized and acknowledges the atrocities of the 1984 genocide in passing a resolution commemorating the November 1984 violence in India as Sikh genocide. The City of Bakersfield has acknowledged that more than 35,006 live and work in the City of Bakersfield and the surrounding areas, making vital contributions to the well-being of our community. The City of Bakersfield has acknowledged the violence against Sikhs continued unabated for several days in more than 100 cities across India, resulting in over 30,006 killed. The City of Bakersfield has acknowledged it is important to the Bakersfield community that we acknowledge such history in order to declare such acts atrocious. Voice our hope that those responsible are punished and express appropriate sympathy so that history does not repeat itself. Jiswan Singh Kalada documented evidence of these atrocities. He was dedicated to finding evidence of misconduct and human rights abuses. He fought both for the victims and their families, as well as was committed to having their stories told, no matter the consequences upon him. Naming a park in his honor preserves that legacy and celebrates the value that all of Bakersfield's residents hold high. We, the Sikh youth, are so excited for this initiative and welcome this conversation with our elected officials. Thank you for your time. Waigurjika kalsa, vaigurjiki fatah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Harveer Kar.
Good evening, respected city council. My name is Harveer Kar, and I'm a student at Ridgeview High School. Our Sikh community youth is so excited about this park renaming. In fact, our entire Sikh community is so excited for this initiative. We've had a petition going around in our community, and it collects more and more support every single day. We've spoken about this initiative at our gurdwar, our places of worship, and our community is so inspired and overjoyed by this new act. But as we, as a generation of Sikhs, we feel unheard. We've expressed our excitement, our plans, and our community is backing us, but we've felt little to no support or progress from our elected officials, which is deeply saddening. We are the voice of our Sikh community, and we would like to be seen and heard as this. We ask for greater representation, greater acknowledgement of diversity, and civil and human rights being reflected and honored in our local community, especially in a political climate like today's. We want to honor our future, as this park renaming will be a permanent landmark in the City of Bakersfield, marking our presence and our pursuit for the values that Jiswan Singh Kalada gave his life to: justice, truth, sovereignty, and human rights. We invite our city council members, our mayor, our community, and especially our Ward 7 council member, Mr. Chris Parlier, to a town hall that we, as a Sikh youth, are hosting at Stone Creek Park next Wednesday, March 28th, at 6:00 PM. We encourage our trusted elected officials to join us at this town hall, and we listen to the voices of the Sikh community who demand for this. We, the Sikh youth, are so excited for this initiative and welcome this conversation with our elected officials. Thank you for your time. Waigurjika kalsa, vaigurjiki fatah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Samran Kar.
Good evening, council. My name is Samran Kar, and I'm a student at Ridgeview High School. I'm here in support of changing the name of Stone Creek Park to Jiswan Singh Kalada Park. I'm a product of Bakersfield, being born and raised here, having attended the public schools here, and this is so important for me. Growing up as a Sikh student, I cannot imagine how monumental it would have been if I'd been walking home from Stone Creek Junior High School to see a park named after a Sikh hero of my community, a human rights activist, to see this representation and celebration of my identity, acknowledging the ethnic diversity of our Bakersfield community. Miseducation and ignorance have resulted in countless young Sikh students being the target of cruel and hateful words and acts. I've seen it and experienced it throughout my own life. Only in learning the strength of my identity did I overcome this. But I see this park name change as being more than just a renaming. It's an opportunity for the City of Bakersfield to recognize and act. It's an opportunity to declare that, yes, as a city, we celebrate the diversity of our communities. This park name change is for the next generation of Sikhs and for every ethnic community in Bakersfield, who I hope will follow in example in seeking that our institutions and landmarks reflect the diversity of our great city of Bakersfield. This is something new, something unique, something groundbreaking for our City of Bakersfield. And we deplore our elected officials to be the change and set the precedence. We, the Sikh youth, are so excited for this initiative and welcome this conversation with our elected officials. Thank you for your time. Waigurjika kalsa, vaigurjiki fatah.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have somebody from Recreation Parks reach out to this group and discuss the possibilities? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Michael Turnipseed regarding poll data.
Madam Mayor, council members, staff, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. Tonight, you're going to have a workshop on polling results for the sales tax increase. We have some questions that think need to be considered as we start this process. We've already met with four council members. We plan to meet with the rest of you in the next month or so, as it fits into your schedules, so we can discuss this issue thoroughly. Really, the first question is, how does a city benchmark itself against its peers? And how do they identify who their peers are? Mayor Go, you're at the table with the Big 11 now. Or is it just California's Big 20? Or is it Boise, Tucson, Wichita? Or is it the world? Look back 20 years ago, and you see what the competition was doing. The successful ones were building bridges to the 21st century economy. Has the city conducted consumer satisfaction surveys? And how does the city benchmark its service levels: roads, parks, public safety planning? Does Bakersfield actually measure what quality of life is and how they define it? What has the city done to grow revenue? How have we attracted outside capital? How do we attract outside payroll? What are the city's true occupancy costs for new businesses looking to locate here? The city needs a plan. Many questions need to be asked and answered before a decision is made whether to put this on the ballot. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have the Polling Update.
Mr. Tandy, Mr. Hewat.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, a very brief history of this item. City council members requested a long-term financial projection from staff. Staff presented that to City Council. City Council then requested we solicit proposals from surveying firms who might sample the Bakersfield residents' viewpoints on a preliminary phase of a 1% sales tax question. That item returned to council, and a contract was awarded to FM3. So tonight, we have two primary pieces here. The staff recommendation is that we continue outreach and education efforts with the public. So we're going to show you a draft of an outreach and education PowerPoint, which we view as being interactive. As we present it, we hear a new question or a new slant on... As we present it, we hear a new question or a new slant on what people are seeking to know. It would be adapted and adjusted. Mr. Huat and I will share that presentation, and then it will be followed by FM3 discussing the survey results. Start out very simply. Some people don't know which level of government provides which service, and this action pertains to the city's general fund. So the city's general fund is depicted here: police, fire, recreation, parks, code enforcement, streets, building and planning. Then we go into enterprise funds below. We're talking about a tax increase primarily for public safety. 62% of the general fund is police and fire-related. What are some of the reasons or criteria that result in this proposal appearing? In the year 2000, our population was essentially 201,000. In the year 2017, it was 383,591%, increase. Same timeframe, the city's geographical area, territory where we provide services, increased 32%. During that timeframe, we opened a West Side and a Southeast Police Substation. We opened fire stations 14 and 15. And the miles of street maintained by our city forces increased from 878 to 1,596. There were nine new parks opened during that timeframe, two sports complexes, and the acreage maintained by our parks crews increased from 394 to 776 acres. This is just a crime stat sheet. These stats could be depicted in many ways and over many different timeframes. This is simply to show that we're not living in a perfect world. There are serious issues that we face, and we have undertaken innovation in association with the International Chiefs of Police Association review of our department. But nonetheless, we have activities that are not acceptable to our public. Fire Department, the other public safety agency here, this depicts staffing levels and calls. Calls are in the green bar, and staffing levels, as you can see, have gone down over the timeframe of this bar chart, despite the fact that calls have increased. What are some of the reasons we have a challenging fiscal outlook? And I will say, I've been the city manager here for 25 years. This is the first time, I guess, the first presentation on this issue in this year during that time period that I have recommended to the elected body that we go out and ask the voting public if they're willing to accept a tax increase. We are fiscal conservatives here. The city manager's office functions that way. City council instructs us to prepare budgets in that regard, and that has been a continuing theme in this city since well before my arrival. Revenues are not keeping pace with community growth. We have energy distress in the oil industry. We have changing dynamics in agriculture as a result of groundwater regulation. We have job losses in both the oil industry and businesses such as State Farm, and at least some seasonal layoffs from Nestle's dryers. We continue to have roadblocks placed before us by state government. Props 4757 and AB 109 have released more prisoners to the streets. Those actions have resulted in making what was felonies misdemeanors, where you can only write a ticket for committing a crime. It's not a significant deterrent, so we arrest and re-arrest. They killed redevelopment. Redevelopment was an $8 million economic engine that resulted in many, many improvements in three different geographic areas, and the state simply made it disappear. And we continue to see a myriad of mandates from the state government for which they do not compensate us. This one is an enterprise fund, but you're all familiar, painfully familiar, with the recent mandate that necessitated that we undertake a $45 million contract to add treatment processes to our water system with only five months' notice to come into compliance. That's an example. That's an extreme example, but these mandates from the state continue. We have significant known costs on the horizon. Calpers, despite efforts in the past to bring a referendum to reduce benefit levels, to change three or four elements of the compensation package to make them less expensive, continues to impose $5 million a year rate increases on the city. As others do, we have increases in healthcare utility costs. We also have to change our radio system from analog to digital. The analog systems no longer are provided with parts. This includes both the towers and the devices held by the police officers and firefighters. We're buying our parts on eBay. This has been an experience we've had in other areas before, but you can only do it for a while. We can probably get three to five years out of it, but eventually eBay runs out of the replacement parts as well. This is $17 million cost, and it is being done in cooperation with the county, where the costs for the transmission devices would be shared and jointly used. So that is the lowest-cost alternative available to us. People ask what the city has done to reduce costs. We have always budgeted conservatively, lived within our means, adjusted our budget, whether it be state capture, economic cycles, to reduce expenses to match revenues. We'll talk more about some examples of that later in this presentation. A 1913 study showed that we had the leanest staffing ratio of 107 cities with a population over 200,000. Measure D, I mentioned earlier, was the council-initiated action to reduce pensions, which the voters approved. And employees hired after 2006 received no retiree health benefits whatsoever. We have had $15 million in cuts to the general fund since fiscal year 1415. There is only so far you can cut, and we believe that we have cut down to the level where the only thing left is service quality, and we don't believe that the residents in Bakersfield are accepting of less-than-very-good-quality services. Overtime travel, temporary employees, streetscape, park maintenance, 13 positions, and deferring several significant capital projects. Again, deferring capital projects can only be done for so long. If a ferrofis leaking, eventually, you're going to have to take care of it. We've installed water conservation devices in all of our parks. Tonight, you have on your agenda the conversion of all of our streetlights, all that haven't been converted to a lower-energy-consumption model. They're all going tonight. That is the kind of thing we've done on a continuous basis here to live within our means. And we are aggressively pursuing all grant opportunities for freeways, for police-related financial assistance and activities and programs. Mr. Gary of my office personally wrote grants which yielded over $3.5 million last year. Do we privatize? Do we use the private sector? Yes, we have, and we have for the long term. The arena and convention center and amphitheater are privatized. Half of our sanitation service is privatized. Our sports complexes, such as Era Park and the Sports Village, Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, because we do also solicit naming rights, are done by parent groups. The city does the parking lots and certain costs, but the lawn mowing and the maintenance of the fields and so on are done in cooperation with parent groups. And what have we done to enlist evaluation of ourselves from third parties or others? Well, we brought in the International Association of Chiefs of Police, which resulted in a significant reduction in response times to Priority One calls. I think it was a $2 million expense, and for that, we yielded many times that in terms of service quality. The Public Works Department is going through an accreditation process. The Parks Department has previously gone through an accreditation process, and the Fire Department is going through an accreditation process. These are professional organizations which have adopted a series of standards and measures by which first-quality services are measured, in their view, and we voluntarily undertaken all these and sought a review by others. I misspoke on the Fire Department, the reference there. They are going through accreditation, but a privatized review, the Insurance Service Office, which rates fire departments based on water supply, manpower, 100 items, actually reviewed us and increased our rating from a Class III to a Class II. A member of council also asked, what about lean Six Sigma? And, well, reasonable people can disagree. I would characterize this as being a tool used by big bureaucracies, not small, lean, rapidly-functioning organizations like the city of Bakersfield. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Huat.
Good evening again, council, mayor. One item, too, that we wanted to highlight, as well as, as you saw tonight, the city is very much in the business of ensuring that our budget information is out there and available in a way that is actually award-winning. So as we did earlier this evening, received the award for the 18th consecutive year for the budget document. Actually, I have 36 consecutive years of awards for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that's put together by our Finance Department. And as I mentioned, we launched the Open Budget Platform, which won an award as well. Some common misconceptions that we hear about the city's budget is the fact that really most of it is non-discretionary, meaning that the revenue the city collects is restricted to very specific uses. And I'll get into some examples here in a moment. But as you can see, about 61% of the city's overall budget meets that threshold for restricted use. Only about 39% is discretionary. So examples include of those restricted funds: gas tax, utility surcharge, and transportation development fees. In this case, those can only be used for road-related projects. Park development fees, as they are named, can only be used to develop parks, does not pay for ongoing operational expenses. City can't raise fees beyond the cost of providing that service. So in this case, we couldn't just add 25% to a park rental fee to generate revenue. State law doesn't allow it, and we cannot do that. And then, as we talked about, our enterprise funds: sewer, water, and garbage cannot be utilized. Those fees that are collected cannot be utilized, in this instance, in this example, to pay for, say, police patrol. As I mentioned, most every revenue that the city collects in one form or another is governed by Proposition 218, among several other state laws that limit how those revenues are generated, where they go, and what they can be used for. So we wanted to look at how Bakersfield compares, and there are several ways to do this. What we did is we looked at the top 20 cities in the state by population, but there's a caveat. We excluded San Francisco and Los Angeles because we do not believe in really any way that the city of Bakersfield compares to either of those cities in any way. So take that, when you look at the green lines in these graphs, and I'm going to keep that in mind, that although it says the top 20 cities, we did exclude LA and San Francisco. First, when we look at the Police Department, the average of the top 20 cities have 742 sworn staff. The city of Bakersfield has a current authorized complement of police officers of 407. The vehicle theft rate is a rate that's calculated by a third-party insurance company, and they look at nationwide. They look at vehicle thefts in every community. The rate in Bakersfield is 854. The average for the top 20 cities, or the top 18 cities, is 573. That 854 number in the year, the last year that it was calculated, which I believe is about a year ago, that placed Bakersfield third in the nation for auto thefts. The city workforces in these other communities average about 3,600. As we mentioned previously, we run a very lean operation. We're at 1,850. We also looked at some per capita numbers to see how we compare. When you look at the general fund spend per capita in these other cities, it averages $740. For the city of Bakersfield, the per cap spend is 511. And then finally, data shows that when you look at park spending per capita, the other cities are at about $104, and we're at 55. We don't just work in that conservative mindset when we are talking about the general fund that also extends to our enterprise funds. So for the purpose of tonight's discussion, we wanted to show you the various cities that are, in this case, refuse. Solid Waste Division looks at when they evaluate and provide reference for single-family residential refuse rates. See, Bakersfield is at the low end, over on the left, at $200 on an annual basis. We've called out a few cities. Visalia is 286 a year. Fresno's close to $400 a year. Clovis at a little over $770 a year. And in Oakland, you're paying just shy of $1,800 a year for refuse. Similarly, our Wastewater Division puts together charts every year, and this shows you the annual residential charge for sewer. Bakersfield, again, is at the low end at 215, and then it rises to Modesto at 376, Stockton at 530, and then Tulare at $570 on the high end for the cities that we looked at here. So a little bit more, about that 39% or so of the city's budget that's discretionary in nature, the large majority is here in the general fund, again, which is the discretionary fund that has few restrictions on how these dollars are spent. The majority of the dollars that are spent or collected into this fund either come from property tax or sales tax, and for every dollar that is appropriated or spent out of the general fund, 62 cents goes to either fire or police, and that equated to about $125 million in the current year. The remainder of the general fund goes to functions such as streets, parks, code enforcement, and administration. So over on the right here, we'll walk through, again, public safety, public works, recreation and parks, general government, which is finance, city manager's office, city attorney, et cetera, our non-departmental, community development, and then finally, there's some transfers that are out of the general fund that make up less than 1%. So we talk about where we are today and how we move forward. We see generally two paths that are available. The first is a path where we stay at the status quo, which we know over time will erode city services, and because we have made several cuts over the last few years, the largest area to remain, that's remained somewhat whole over those years, has been public safety, and they make up the largest percent of the general fund. So we do envision down this road reductions to public safety. We talk about economic development and expanding the tax base. We have very limited business development services as we stand today, and unfortunately, moving down this road will continue to be very limited in how we're able to retain and attract new business and expand the tax base. Finally, and I'll get to this in a minute, but limited ability to address quality-of-life services and programs. We are talking about homelessness issues, litter, our recreation and parks, our code enforcement. These are the types of functions and opportunities that the city has to maintain and enhance quality of life for residents in Bakersfield, and that would be subject to further deterioration under the status quo. The other side of the coin is a discussion about additional resources, which we've had with the council over the last few meetings in the past. That generally means that we're able to likely enhance public safety, add police officers, address areas of concern, attract and retain new businesses, to ramp up economic development, to really be in a proactive position in that area, to enhance those quality-of-life services and programs, and address some of the discussions that we've had about homelessness and the city's ability to really move forward with programs that are meant to... and the city's ability to really move forward with programs that are meant to address that. And overall, this path, in our view, results in long-term stability for the organization. So as we talked about additional resources, I wanted to talk just really briefly about sales tax, where it goes today, and some examples, and I'll move through this quickly. As of today, the city, in the city of Bakersfield, the base sales tax rate is set by the state. That's currently 7 and 1/4%. With most of it, as you can see in the pie, going to the state and the county, with 1% pursuant to state law going directly to the city. Again, most of that that you pay today in the city of Bakersfield goes to the state. Only voters, as we talked about earlier, can choose to increase sales tax in cities. And the most common type of local revenue measure that you see is the add-on sales tax. So again, revenues from anything that's approved locally would go to local, support local services. It does not go to the state. Another component of all this is that visitors to Bakersfield would also infuse money into the economy when they are, when they would pay this amount as well. So as many of you travel to different jurisdictions across the state that do have an additional sales tax, and you make purchases there that are taxable, you're depositing and leaving money behind that they use to provide services to their local residents and community. And then finally, there are several items under state law that are exempt from sales tax, commonly groceries, prescription medicine, and several healthcare items. This is just a small sample of those items that are exempt. So is Bakersfield alone in either having or have had these discussions? That answer is no. 93% of residents, approximately, within California residing communities, that voters have approved an additional sales tax to support local services and projects, and that cities across the state, including the Central Valley and others, are continuously having these discussions. So 93% of communities and residents reside in a community where an additional sales tax is being paid and utilized to support local services. So for this case, we did look at the top 20 cities, all the 20 cities, and looked at the sales tax, excuse me, sales tax rate in each of these cities. Bakersfield, again, is on the low end. It's the only city out of the top 20 that has the base sales tax rate of 7 and 1/4. You get to the other side of the spectrum at Long Beach, for perspective, it's 10 and 1/4. The other cities fit in between there. The average is just shy of 8 and 1/2%. When you look at Central Valley and some other cities, not necessarily in the Central Valley, we looked at, again, Bakersfield is on the low end at 7 and 1/4, Stockton's at the high end at 9. The average amongst these cities, including four that are in Kern County, Arvin, Wasco, Delano, Ridgecrest, is about 8.28%, just above a percentage. So again, just a quick example, on a $20 purchase, you would have $1045 paid today if you bought something in Bakersfield that's taxable, that's 7 and 1/4. $120 goes to the state, 5 cents goes to a county transportation fund that's set up by the state, and then 20 cents is kept local for the various services that we have mentioned. Under hypothetical 1-cent scenario, that same $20 item, you'd pay $1.65. It would increase the sales tax there by 20 cents for that item, but that 20 cents remains local. So I walked through the same example for you again, where $1.20 goes to the state, that same 5 cents goes to the county. The initial 20 cents still comes to the city, but then that additional 20 cents, in addition to total 40 cents, stays with the city as well. So how much would a 1-cent sales tax generate, and where would it go? We estimate anywhere between $50 and $60 million annually is how much it would generate. It would be subject to audits and oversight. And where it would go, generally, public safety, and as you'll see later with the feedback that we have from the community through the survey, public safety ranks right at the top, additional police officers to address property crimes, auto thefts, the effects that we're seeing from these state mandates and decisions that have been placed on us, as well as response times for non-urgent matters, and looking at quality of life issues. For the Fire Department, it's very responsible to maintain that ISO Class II rating, because that does have some residual effect on insurance rates. And again, that really makes up about the top percentage and a half of fire departments in the nation. So it's something that we want to maintain, and we know the city's going to continue to grow. And with the Fire Department, we need to maintain responsible growth. Again, quality of life issues, you'll see here in a little bit, recreation and parks, code enforcement, homelessness, and litter are all areas that could be addressed. And then finally, economic development. We must be competing on a state and national level in a proactive manner to retain and attract new business and expand the tax base. Status quo likely means cuts to public safety. It means that we're going to increase police response times and fire times, fire response times most likely, as we are essentially through cutting any fat that may have been on the bone, so to speak, which there wasn't much to begin with. Longer response times to non-urgent emergency issues, that may be streetlights that are out in neighborhoods, that may be traffic signals that are on flash, that may be road repairs that are needed but can't be addressed. We're going to have very limited ability to proactively address business attraction and retention. And finally, some of the other issues that have come up recently and have been an ongoing discussion, like homelessness, it's going to be very, very challenging to do more than we are today. So with that, I go back to this chart showing where we believe we are today and what the ultimate outcomes would be based upon the actions that are taken. What I'm going to do now is actually introduce John Fairbank with FM3, who's going to be presenting the survey results to you. And then I believe after that, we'll come back to staff after questions for a final comment and recommendation. So with that, I will introduce John.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor and City Council, it's a pleasure to be here and present you results on your public opinion survey among your residents. Just kind of quickly, my name's John Fairbank, a partner in FM3. A little bit quickly about FM3, we were founded in 1981. We could, we are basically, our job is public opinion research. We do almost 300 surveys a year. We also do focus groups, a number of different opinion research elements. We have, for those, going through the list of many of those cities who have done sales taxes, I plead guilty to working on many of these. Actually, Stockton and Long Beach, I think, are at the top of your list. So we, again, we focus on, our firm focuses primarily on initiatives like this, cities, school districts, community colleges, water bonds, and here is just a quick, since 2008, the number of cities we've worked in and been successful in. Our recent experience in this county, it was in 2016, this last election, presidential election, we worked for your three school districts, and worked with one of the council members, Councilman Gonzalez, and this city school district, and helping to pass this is, as you know, these measures were all bonds, and they required 55%. There was a statewide bond that passed in this county with 52%. But these local districts, community college, the high school, all passed. You can see, 2/3 are above. I can't tell you how many people advised us, you can't put this many measures on the ballot in Kern County. This is a measure, you have statewide measures, about 18 of them, including a statewide school bond, and you guys will never pass these measures. Well, your voters, as you will see in your measure, are very specific about supporting additional improvements in quality of life, safety, upgrading their colleges, their high schools, their elementary schools, at a very strong percentage. These are all 2/3 in a very tax-sensitive county. All right, so your community survey, the goal of your survey was basically to address a number of different issues, they're called city satisfaction surveys. The methodology, very quickly here, we completed almost 1,000 interviews, 964. We originally were contracted for 800. We had a very robust response from your voters. The refusal rate is very low. I think we find a time in our history that voters, residents, want to be heard, from whatever spectrum you're on. Our refusal rates are down, our participation rates are higher, and this is, in your city, was one of the examples. We oversampled certain city council wards that were, had lower registration levels based on the November 2018 election. We pull your voter registration files from your district, from your city, and then we match emails, cell phones, from commercial clients, to basically enhance the number of options we have to solicit opinions from your residents. The survey was conducted the 25th through March 1st. Again, these are likely 2018 November voters who have passed voting histories of voting in gubernatorial elections. This was conducted both online, landlines, cell phones, everything was translated into Spanish, so respondents had the option of doing the interviewing either English or Spanish. Okay, plus or minus 4%, the margin of error for 964 interviews. Just kind of basic attitudes of Bakersfield voters. One of the, you're going to see, and this is a good example, this is a question we ask about need. Do you think the city of Bakersfield has a great need, some need, little need, or no real need for additional dollars? We didn't specify whether it's for public safety, police, fire, streets and roads, just do you need, does your city need more money? And 75% either said a great or some need, 10% little need, only 9% said there was no real need for any additional money for the city. That is a very high percentage and a very strongly held perception. This is one of the themes throughout your, this survey, is that your residents, you're going to see very strongly held opinions. We always try to measure intensity in these kinds of questions. So when we ask this question, I look at great need at 44 and no real need at 9, the two kind of polar opposites. And this is a 5 to 1 margin. So this sense that this city needs more money is a strongly held, and I could easily put the 10% up into the 75. So essentially, you have 85-plus who think there's at least some, or a little need for more dollars here. If voters don't perceive a need for additional dollars, you can imagine how difficult it is to get voters to support any finance measure on anything, much less a sales tax. So this is one of the early indicators that your voters clearly see a need for additional dollars in this city. Two different questions here. We asked on the left-hand side, is Bakersfield population has grown substantially in the past years? Is that an accurate or inaccurate statement? And the one to the right, Bakersfield population is growing, is going to grow substantially in the next few years. The left-hand side, you can see there clearly, as your presentation that preceded me described the growth that you have, I'm trying to just put this in attitudinal percentages, 88%, almost 90% say it's accurate that you have grown substantially. We didn't try to say grown some or grown a little. This is substantial growth in the last three years. Only 2% say that's very inaccurate. Again, you're going to see consistent responses from your residents. Basically, everybody had an opinion on almost every question. There is no don't know. You can see, the previous question I think we had was a don't know of 6%. So sometimes we'll be in cities and you'll get a 30, 40%, you know, I'm not really sure of that, or I don't know. This is not true in your city. You'll see most very strong-held opinions and very low, I don't know what the answer to this, or I'm not sure. The right-hand side, what about the future? Are we going to grow substantially? 86%, basically the same percentage, a little lower on the very accurate, 49, but that's almost 50% say that's very accurate to say that growth is going to be substantially increased in the next few years. How are some of your institutions, your jurisdictions doing? This is a job rating, excellent, pretty good, only fair and poor. All pretty good. Fire Department, 90% excellent and good. Police Department, 62%. Parks and Recreation, 55%, 58%. Again, you're, the red poor is very low on all of these. So in testing your service industries here, all testing pretty well. This is an accurate, inaccurate question. Bakersfield crime rate has increased significantly in the last few years. We didn't give any statistics, we didn't try to make an argument about it, just has it increased significantly or not? Again, you see this 75% accurate, almost 50% very accurate, a very strongly held opinion. Only 4% say it's very inaccurate, and only 9% don't know. Again, these are very high numbers for cities, the perception that crime has increased. Most cities these days do think crime has increased. We've got a number of initiatives, we've had different situations with release procedures, but this is one of the most strongly held results that I've seen in a city. The next couple slides are, we're trying to measure the seriousness of problems. So for each of these problems, descriptions of problems to the left, we asked, are they extremely serious problems, very, somewhat, or not too serious? And again, this, you're going to see a consistent theme based on the last question you just saw, crime increase. You're going to see most questions from now on following that basic perception. Here, the most serious problem that we tested, far and away, was gangs and youth violence. 54% extremely serious, 85% extremely very serious, only 10%, well, and that's 10% said somewhat, but only less than 2% said not too serious. So basically, this, the description of gangs and youth violence is the most serious problem that we tested. Number of homeless, right behind it, the intensity is a little lower, about 82%. You can see the blue, not too serious, these are very, very, extremely serious problems. And the general one, we asked, crime in general, you can see kind of the same level of intensity, property crimes such as home break-ins and auto thefts. You can see those top four, other than homeless, all related to crime, public safety, very strongly held. Most, all of your voters think these are very serious or extremely serious problems. State, I'm sorry, state budget cuts to your city programs. This is also, I found in most of these questions, your residents were pretty savvy about what is going on. You saw some in the previous presentation, how much, whether it's the redevelopment dollars or other cuts that the state has had. This is a, it's clearly seen as an extremely serious, very serious problem, 62%, down a little lower than some of the crimes. But again, any cuts that come from the state, this is a serious problem. Condition of local streets and roads is a problem. In many cities, it's the top problem, actually. But in this city, you can see the difference in intensity from, I'm just going to look at the dark brown, the extremely serious problem on condition of local streets and roads, and gangs and youth violence and crime. There is very little comparison on the level of intensity and strength behind your residents' feelings about those. Continued the same question, right? You saw the top few items, these are also not enough police officers on the street. The intensity is down from the general crime as an issue, or gangs and youth, but still at 58%. Only 17% say that's not a problem. Jobs and unemployment, 911 emergency response times. I highlighted the amount you pay in local taxes, but you can see how low that is. I'm not suggesting that voters are excited about paying additional taxes or want to pay additional taxes, but in the relationship between how they view other problems that address them and confront them, this is definitely one of the address them and confront them, this is definitely one of the lowest. And this is typical in most cities in California. Very low, the amount you pay in local taxes is at the bottom of most of the serious rankings for this. Amount of recent, the amount of recent growth and development, again, in many cities in Southern California, this is one of the top items. Growing too fast, too much development, that is not the issue here. Condition of neighborhood parks and recreation opportunities. Here you see not too serious a problem at 25%. So there's, as you saw, the Parks and Recreation Department was, had a pretty good job rating. I understand there clearly could be some upgrades in your parks. Your voters, it's not compared to crime, that is not one of the highest concerns. Condition of local buildings and other facilities was at the very bottom, only 11% thought that was extremely serious. So it just gives you a feel for a variety of different issues we presented to them, and how strongly they felt, and how serious they thought they were. This is, again, additional questions on accurate/inaccurate. I've split these up a little bit to segment them. Six in 10 voters recognized that the city would be forced to cut, cuts without additional funds, and are not as aware of other budget issues. So the top item here is 60% felt, said it was accurate to say, without additional funds, city government would be forced to make cuts in essential city services, right? Bakersfield has reduced funding for city services the past few years. This is also an interesting, as you saw in the previous presentation, you have made significant cuts and reduced funding. This is a, this is a, again, for me, a savvy response, 55% said that was accurate, and that is a high. Voters are following these kinds of issues. 29% didn't know, but to have 55%, that's pretty high for knowledge of what you've had to cut. The city of Bakersfield has about the same budget as other cities. That is, you can see, the 44% don't know. These are the only two questions I found that voters really didn't have an opinion on, a very high opinion. Significant amount of sales tax dollars in Bakersfield come from people who do not live in the city. Only 20% thought that was accurate. All right. We also tested a sales tax measure. This is the draft description. As you know, if you decide to put something like this on the ballot, you have 75 words to describe it, and this is 75 words. We give that a title, and then as you, as a respondent, you either see this online or you hear it on the phone, and it's meant to give them a pretty clear, transparent sense of where this money might go. Shall the city of Bakersfield establish a one-cent sales tax? This is the exact language we tested, providing $50 million annually, and until ended by voters, requiring oversight, audits, all funds only for Bakersfield. So we want to just give them an impression of where the money's going, how much it is, and where it's going to be spent. 65% of your voters said they would support a one-cent sales tax. I'll let that sink in for a minute. 42% were definitely yes. You can see, again, the undecided, everybody, all the voters have an opinion on this. They understood what the ballot language said, where the money goes, where it's going to be spent, and how much it is. And this is a very strong initial, we're going to ask this question a couple different times throughout the survey, depending on how much information we give them, but this is a pretty strong support, 65, almost two-thirds, you need 50 plus 1 to pass this measure, and you're at 42% right now and a definite yes. So it's a good, at least it's a good start. Again, the results of this, I think, are going to follow, that's why I preceded many of the questions you just saw. Where your voters think there's a problem? Do we need more money? Are we growing? Is there future growth? All of these basically underscore a support for something like this, and this is why you saw, again, the previous presentation, most all of the cities in this state have all passed one, two, or three of these kinds of measures. Anyway, it's a good, this is a good start. The next few slides, we also tested, in addition to the one cent on the left-hand side, the 65/31, we said, all right, if your one-cent sales tax, what about a three-cent sales, three-quarter cent sales tax? Would you support that? And would you support a one-half cent? You can see that the support went down as the amount went down. Also, very, again, undecided, everybody has an opinion, you're either supporting this or you're opposing it. This is typical of most cities, again, with the demographics and the perceptions that we just preceded in these questions. Your voters think there's more money, so if you're going to decrease the amount of money coming into the city, there's going to be less support, because as you saw, 75% said there's either a great or some need for additional dollars. So your one cent clearly is the strongest, and got the strongest level of support, even though we gave them different options and smaller amounts. The next few slides basically goes through a demographic profile of who supported the one-cent sales tax, the 65 to 31. In District Number 1, we had a high of 76 to 22. And you can see, most of all the districts, the low is District 4 at 55%, but most, everybody's over 50%, obviously, some 15, 20% plus, pretty uniform support across your cities regardless of ward, okay? This is a question we crossed, you remember, on the left-hand side, we asked a question about, does your city have a great need for additional dollars? Those voters who said yes, my city needs a great deal of, has a great need for additional dollars, which was 44% of the entire sample, among those voters, 77% were supporting this one-cent sales tax. If you thought there was some need for additional funding, which was 32, it's a 71. If you thought there was little or no real need, which was 19%, 65% were opposing. So the more your voters, which we have shown, I think, in some of these questions, your voters clearly think there's a need for additional dollars, but the more you, the more they understand and learn about your challenges, and many of the facts that you saw preceding me, you're going to probably move some of those 19% to the left, some a great need. This is as close to bipartisan support as we have in this country these days. In your city, for a one-cent sales tax, I'm going to start from the right-hand side of the slide. Republicans, who represent 47% of this sample, almost 50% of this sample, are Republicans, registered Republicans, likely voter to vote in 2018. 56% for supporting it. We usually don't get that level of support in most cities. This is, this is a bipartisan, you can see independents at 67, Democrats who are 35% of the electorate at 77. This is, this is a view of bipartisanship on an issue that does not exist for, on too many issues these days. Also, generationally, you can see from left to right, 18, if you're 18 to 29, if you're basically under 40, you're supporting these measures, this measure at 70+, 70 to 80%. And the percentage of those voters is underneath that, so 26% of your voters are under 40. To the opposite spectrum, 75+, which is 8% of your voter, these likely voters, they're at 61. Again, generationally, there's many issues that separate generations these days, but this, again, is a, basically, all of them are over 50, all of your age groups are over 55%, and, except for one age group, everybody's over 60%. Again, pretty uniform level of support, generationally. There usually is a gender gap in these finance measures. Women, there are always more women voting than men. 51% of our sample were women. The women residents in this city are supporting this one-cent sales tax at 70 to 26. Men are 61/36. Again, no undecided, everybody's pretty clear about what this is, no equivocation, and everybody has a very clear opinion. White voters are, represent 63% of your voters. Latinos are 24%. Latinos are at almost 80%. All voters of color is about a third of your electorate, and they're three-quarters support. Again, pretty consistent support across the board, ethnicity by ethnicity. Okay. We also tested some elements of the ballot measure. So we tested, this question is basically, I'm going to give you a list of ways that funding can be generated by the measure, and provisions that could be included. You're going to see, this is, I think we have three or four pages of this. We're trying to really just specifically isolate options for spending, so, and these, this is ranked by the extremely and very important to the right-hand side, which the top item was 89%. When we, when we read these two, or heard them over the phone, they were rotated, so you never heard the same element first. So at the very top, again, this is, continues on the consistent theme of crime, public safety dominates, you know, the intensity here, this whole page, and you're going to have, I believe, four pages of elements here, starting with improving rapid response to assaults and robberies, maintaining and improving rapid response to gang violence. I always look, again, at the extremely important, keeping public areas safe, I mean, you're in the, this whole page is 40% extremely important, which, again, is a very high percentage. And I think almost all of those, except retaining and attracting jobs and businesses, every one of them is related to crime or public safety. Just a very, very dominant theme through this whole survey, reaction to public safety. The next one, same question, we just are moving down the extremely and very important percentage a little bit to the far right, instead of into the 80s, we now have 77% cuts to local fire protection. Here's repairing streets and roads. All of these, this whole page, again, is, these are seen as important expenditures if a measure like this passed by your voters. Addressing homelessness. Requiring no money goes to Sacramento sticks out there. Voters want to make sure that this money that they might support stays here in Bakersfield, and that's one of the items that we want to make sure that they understand if you proceed with this. And the last page here, I'm going to start at the bottom, repairing local sidewalks. So you can see there's quite a difference in the level of intensity on where your voters would spend money if something of a measure like this passed. Maintaining parks, preventing cuts to neighborhood parks. Nothing, these are, these are obviously very important to communities, but nothing compares to the priority of spending that you saw on that front page, all public safety-related. Okay? We also gave your residents some additional information, and here are some statements made by people who might support a one-cent sales tax. And the, once they heard this statement, is this very convincing, or somewhat convincing, or not convincing, to support this one-cent sales tax? These are the top, we tested about seven or eight of these messages. The top ones here, same basic theme, gangs at the top. So when they heard the full item of drug trafficking and youth violence has reached epidemic levels, we need to get more police officers on the street, that was 74%. You see that 74%, 75%, a number of different places. You have, you're getting 65% support for your one-cent sales tax, but you have messages that exceed that support by a good 10%. Safer. I would be convinced to support this one-cent sales tax if police, Bakersfield has fewer police officers than other comparable cities. Some of the same facts and figures you saw presented to you earlier. Response times, fire especially, right? We don't want fire cuts, response times for fire, public safety, AMTs. Okay, those are the top three. You also had another three here that were very high, youth, this, number of this money, gang prevention, programs that at-risk youth. State takeaways is a little lower, but still in the 73%, knowing that the state has taken away money that the city here does not have anymore, and efficient. City's been doing a good, efficient job. This is one of the highest percentages we've seen, and this message, again, you had, you saw the earlier recognition that the city has had to cut, there was some recognition of how serious a problem that is, so this is a pretty good message still. It doesn't compare to the crime messages, but the fact that you have an efficient, been efficient in your management of your money was a pretty good, almost two-thirds. And the last one here, we have, again, the top two here, accountability, we told them this, citizens oversight, all the money will be spent in Bakersfield. 72% very, or somewhat convinced, same for property values. Again, voters are focusing on their local communities. The world is out of control, and a lot of problems going on, and voters, you're seeing them focus much more on what we can do in our local communities, improve the quality of life, improve safety, and this relates to property values. We have local property values, making sure as well-maintained streets, safe and clean and safe. The other, the two that didn't work as well on convincing, attract local businesses, still 58% convincing argument, and the sales tax, fact that others will be partners with the local taxpayers in paying that as they come in and spend money there. Okay, so the initial vote you saw earlier was 65 to 31, with a 42% definitely yes. After they heard these kinds of messages, the support went up to a whopping 66%. So there's no real increase in support, but you see the increased intensity. I know that doesn't sound like, look like a lot, but when you start at almost two-thirds for a tax measure in a city, there's not a lot higher you can go, to be honest. And you can see, you're 40, you need 50 plus 1 to pass this. Once they heard this information, you almost had, just of the definite, yes is the 50% to pass it. We also gave your residents some opposition messages to the far-right-hand side. So we asked the same vote, sales tax, with that same language you saw up front, the 75 words. The initial vote to the left-hand side, 65/31. After the public, the positive information that you saw, that you had, that same 75 words was read again to them, and then after some opposition messages, that same 75 words, one-cent sales tax. You can see there is a little drop in the level of support. The 25% definitely no stays consistent, so we tried to simulate a pretty robust opposition to it, and you're still 8 points, 41% definitely yes was basically where we started out on the initial vote, and it did drop it a little bit, but basically it's still 58/31, with only 8% undecided, is a pretty strong showing after opposition messages. Okay, I think I've hit most of these conclusions. We believe a one-cent sales tax ballot major is viable for further planning with good support across all city wards and demographic subgroups. Bakersfield voters clearly recognize the need for additional dollars, and a key driver to provide money for the city. There's overwhelming sense that crime has increased in Bakersfield, and as you saw, question after question after question, no matter how we asked it, recognition of crime, recognition of we need to address it, recognition that we're willing to pay for it. In addition to crime, you had, you saw homelessness, repair local streets and roads, a little lower. So when we, our recommendation is to at least conduct further outreach and gather more input from the community to see if, address, so they understand your challenges. Any questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir, for your presentation tonight, found it informative. I think many folks in the community were surprised by the results. I think that's fair to say, and I just had a couple of questions regarding that. In the past polls that you've conducted, I wonder how predictive have those polls been in past elections?
You know, they're all pretty close, and one of the main reasons is, one, we have a very, I think, solid methodology, but these kinds of measures that you saw for sales tax- But these kinds of measures that you saw for sales tax, I would say the same thing for your, your elementary school, the, the other school measures that we passed, there are, there's very little undecided in all of these measures. Voters know and are, have voted on many of these measures rather consistently on your, all the schools that passed in November. We were within four or five points of what the end result was because voters basically understand, that's seventy-five words. They understand where the money is going, they understand one cent sales tax. And so we have very little undecided, so you have, you have very little, the fluidity and the, the softness of votes is, is low in these kinds of local measures because they are pretty familiar to voters. And you'll see, not just in this city, but whether we did the Stocktons or the Long Beaches, most of these don't really vary with, from, you know, four, five, six percent. If there is strong opposition, sometimes there's a little more fluidity, but most of these measures are, are not opposed. And so the initial polling, because there's such stable views on the city and what their needs are and what they're willing to support for local services, is, is, the volatility is low.
And similar question. Having conducted surveys in various other communities, I wonder what was unique about this city? How did Bakersfield survey compare to others, from your experience?
Well, your, your registration here is of conservative registration. You have almost fifty percent Republican. And I think the, the recognition of a conservative electorate on especially the crime issue was, was, was very clear. And most cities in, in California have more Democratic registration than Republican registration. So this is a little unusual, but this is, as I said, when I looked at, when you, we looked at the, the partisan breakdown, this is, this is as bipartisan as you get in a city like this, on a, on a measure like this. So this is unique in that way.
And there are skeptics out in the community, of course. I wonder, have there been times where you have advised cities or other local government agencies not to move forward with initiative?
You know, we, we, unless you have some good, solid numbers like this, we, we suggest you postpone them. So we, most, we have a, we have a ninety-five percent success rate because we are very conservative. And if you're, if you start at forty-five percent, we're going to suggest you, you postpone it and work your electorate a little more, educate them a little more, so they understand more of your challenges. So there are a number of cities that are testing right now, cities that we have recommended that they don't go forward with a measure like this. So we, we, we have recommended they don't go forward. It's very, it's very rare that we recommend, I don't think we've had a, had a loss in the last few years that we recommend a city going forward because, because these measures are clearly understood. And again, in the time where our safety for all of these communities is a very strong item and has been for a number of years.
Great. Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Hewitt, if I may, Mayor. Mr. Hewitt, earlier this afternoon, we heard from Michael Trenipsid, Mr. Trenipsid, who's in the back here from the Current Tax Payers Association. I think the association's voice is an important one in this conversation. And he brought up a question that I wanted to reiterate, and that is, what does a city do to grow revenue? And as we looked at the two paths that you presented of both the status quo and then perhaps future revenue, how did those scenarios play out in terms of growing additional revenue? And then a corollary to that is, let's say we do pass the sales tax and the voters decide that this is in fact what they want to do. Is that long lasting? And how long will that, how long will it be until the city comes back and says, we need additional revenue?
Councilmember Gonzalez, I'll start and then Chris can add. The California legal requirements, as they have been developed, give very little discretion about raising general fund revenues, as, as Mr. Hewitt presented. You can only do fees at the level that you recover your costs. You, you, you can't do a general tax increase of any kind or a new tax of any kind without a vote of the people. Where we think there is opportunity here is in the enhancement of the perception of safety, quality of life, amenities within our community that makes us a more attractive, secure place in which to live and do business. We think that those things are positive business measures. Certainly, the addition of an economic development promotion arm, which would kind of in a sense replace what was taken away with redevelopment, would assist in that regard as well. We certainly pursue grants, we certainly pursue avenues to efficiency, as we have presented. With respect to the duration of this as a measure, this is nearly a twenty-five percent increase in our general fund. We have, we have thought about ways that we can address one of the issues that's a common problem, common perception among the public, which is, we can't control what PERS rates are and we can't get out of their system, so we have to deal with it. Well, in the, in the case of retiree healthcare, we created a special trust and an actuarial analysis which paid into that trust in order to abate the demand of acceleration in, in cost in future years by that particular liability. We could do a similar thing here. In fact, there is an opportunity with more cash on hand due to payment options available through PERS to have a cash reduction of about seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars just net by having some additional money in the bank and, and this special reserve fund. We think this would last a very long time, ten years beyond. We would, we would not take it as an invitation to spend. Yes, there would be public safety enhancements. Yes, there would be catching up on deferred capital, but we wouldn't go out and spend every dollar in, in day one. We would, we would take a conservative approach with a large amount of money, put some aside to abate those future cost escalations and address priorities that the residents identify. Want to add more?
I noticed that, again, with our, our economic development side of things, we essentially have about a half a staff member, more or less, that's dedicated to that. And they, and they do a very good job of what they do, but we, and all of our staff do, do the same. They do more with less. But in this case, and to grow the tax base, we feel we need to, to increase and make that a little bit more robust to compete on, on that national and on that, that state level to expand the task base. So this is essentially would, would supplement and help that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Yeah. Mr. Fairbanks, just a question. There's movement out there to get a repeal of the state's new gas tax on, on this ballot. And from what I hear, we won't know for a month or two whether they'll even make it. If that appears on this ballot, would that change your perception of the support or the ability for the sales tax, you know, to be approved with a no new taxes type of probably heavy advertising campaign all over the state with that measure on the ballot?
It would not. I think you're, I think it was very clear, your voters were very clear about what they saw the problems here and very clear in their strength of support and commitment to support additional dollars to address those needs. And I think anything statewide, you saw in sixteen, a number of different, same question was asked in sixteen. There are a number of very controversial measures, some taxing, and, and everybody said, you can't put these local measures on the ballot because you have anti-tax measures, you have many of these measures statewide that, that are controversial and voters are just going to kind of vote no on all these. I think the local, the focus of most voters in these cities, especially yours here, is on how can we improve the quality of life and make us safer in these, in these situations? I think that was very clear. And I don't think a gas tax, I happen to be the pollster in, in that, one of those, on that four SB one, and I don't, I don't think anything statewide like that. Voters are very clear in separating what they vote statewide and what they vote on locally.
Okay, thank you.
And I think an example was the school districts that were passed. Voters voted no against a number of the statewide tax measures, but came right back in very strong numbers, supported their local schools.
Okay. Another different question is, from your experience with other cities, what have the most effective ones done to inform people to, you know, we, look, we didn't have a very good turnout. It's a pretty empty house. This is a pretty big issue. And some was probably a little disappointed that there aren't, your survey seemed that a lot of people seem to know what's going on anyway. But how have other cities taken this, the information out to the public? Because the city really can't do it. It's going to have to get picked up by our, by our community, by the business community. Someone will have to promote that. That's, you know, we can provide information, but, but we won't be promoting.
Right.
How have the successful ones done that?
The successful ones, like the presentation you saw that preceded me, you communicate what your challenges are, the facts and figures that you saw the city manager present in that, in that, those documents, is what you, most cities communicate to their voters. We're educating, we, we have outreach education campaigns, the city promotes. There is nothing about advocating, there's nothing about mentioning taxes, but basically the more your voters understand about, and the question I had, or little or no need for more money, the more they understand about the facts and figures of, of what your challenges are, we generally find voters solidifying their support. So the probables and the soft voters go into the definite support and more of the undecideds go. So the more your voters understand and get information about what your challenges are in the next two or three, or four or five months, the more likely they are going to be, they want to support, again, you saw that, they want to support and have additional improvement services. They do not want services cut. And so anything, any mention about having to cut something or, or, or less funding for public safety, you will see a very strong reaction.
I guess, who most effectively communicated? Do you go to the Rotary Clubs? Do you have Allen Tandy make a lot of Rotary presentations?
All of the, all of the above.
Town halls?
All of the above.
Okay.
Most cities and school districts do public outreach. We, we mail. I think the school districts, we actually mailed information out. Here's what the challenges are of the community colleges. Here's what the challenges are of the city. Again, many of the facts, just basic facts and figures, you, you have an electorate here that is paying very close attention. Everybody's paying close attention in this time of, of turmoil that we're all in, with especially on the safety side. Everybody is very attentive to what's going on in their community, especially on the safety item. So the more mail, Rotary Clubs, public service announcements, allies that you have that have an interest in communicating your challenges financially and the possibility of cuts, all helps to usually increase support and solidify the support that's already there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Weir?
Thank you, Mayor. Allen happened to mention one of my pet peeves, which is CalPERS, and the way they have handled themselves and the way they have basically abdicated their fiduciary responsibility. And I think it's a disservice to our voters because to go out and to tell them that we're going to raise fifty million dollars and it's all going to go to public safety and it's all going to go to a particular area that they're concerned of, when I frankly believe that our revenue growth will not be enough, it will not sustain us right now to even pay our PERS liability. And so a substantial portion of this sales tax revenue is going to have to be dedicated to take care of that liability. So to go out and, and say to them that we're raising this much money and it's going to go to the services that you're being, you're being told that it's going to go, I think that's a real disservice to our voters and I have quite a concern about that. And I think probably it'd be good if we had some sort of projection that would tell us what, what that's going to be, what our revenue growths, what our revenue growth is anticipated to be for the next four or five years. Because we are going to get hit with substantial Cal, CalPERS increases over those years. And it'll be nice to know how much we're going to be able to handle that with our current revenue growth and how much is going to have to come from a sales tax increase or from cuts in our services.
Councilman, I think to answer your question, the seventy-five words, we, we go to great length and the city attorney approved this to make sure that we have a, a pretty broad description of where this money is likely to go. I mean, you have, you spend sixty-one percent of your money on public safety, sixty percent of those words do not deal with public safety issues. We, we do mention police and fire and gang, but we have repair streets, we have potholes, parks, senior, youth, track new businesses, homelessness, water conservation. So you're, there's a, there's a, there's a definite goal to make sure that voters hear that this is, this is a, this money goes to a broad description of issues and problems and services that the city uses. We, we cannot, and purposely did not overload this, as you know, if you, if it's all public safety, this whole, if it was a two-thirds directed at public safety, this whole thing would be public safety. But, but we, we want to make sure that voters do not think it only goes to public safety. It goes to a broad variety of items. We don't want, we don't want them to be confused. And we, the city attorney, I believe, approved this legally to not overemphasize public safety.
Well, I appreciate that response, but I don't think that answers my question, unless we have a, a sentence in here that is going to say that it's going to pay down our already, our exposure, that we're already exposed to CalPERS rate hikes over the next five years and beyond. Because any adjustment in the CalPERS rates means it's going to take more money from the city of Bakersfield. So what I'm saying is, if we're going to raise fifty million dollars and part of that, maybe ten, twenty, maybe twenty-five million of that has to go down just to pay our current pension debt, I don't see that in the statement.
You don't. It, we, we, it gets lumped under other general services. And frankly, if we had...
I, I don't want to argue. I, I'm trying to make a point here that we are not going to have, to me, we will not have that money available, all of that money, to do the things that are on your list because some of it's already going to a debt that we have already incurred that started back in the early two thousands and now seventeen, eighteen years later, it is, is blooming and is eating our budget like you can't believe. So I, I understand what you're saying here. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm saying I think it's disingenuous if we're going to raise fifty million dollars and say it's going for all these things when, in fact, I believe a large chunk of it is going to go to pay down our pension debt.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to address that? Mr. Tandy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a comment. Councilmember Weir and I have had parallel thoughts on finances for most of the time we've both been here, so we may sever a little bit tonight. I believe you were a leading force, Councilmember Weir, behind taking care to reduce future liabilities on the retiree healthcare by creating the irrevocable trust and moving in that direction. We have...
I was, I'm very, I'm very proud of that, too.
Yes, and, and we are too. And so we took from that model the concept of paralleling something here. We can't make it go away. I don't think our voters will object to doing things proactive to deal with it, either through the cash reduction I mentioned or through the irrevocable trust that would help us. We, we can control our own interest earnings when we control the money, so we can select a level of investment risk which gives us a better return than the variable rates of return that PERS experienced. So I, I view that as being a positive step in regard to holding down those, those pension costs.
And I would agree with you and I would certainly support that, but it's going to take money to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that I necessarily have a whole lot of questions, though, though I am curious at, towards the end of the survey summary you shared, you mentioned on page 18 revised numbers that reflected opposition. You know, I think, and I think similar to some of my colleagues, and, and I think maybe some of the folks in, in the community, I was, I was equally surprised at, at how high support appeared to be for such a measure. But I'm curious what, what your opposition looked like, how much you, you beat up the idea, what exactly it is that, that fell into that opposition description.
I don't, I don't remember the paragraph exactly, but we had a pretty lengthy paragraph that touched on pensions, on gas tax, on enough is enough. We had a number of different messages kind of in a, in a paragraph that, that all respondents heard. It was, it was pretty comprehensive. I'd be glad to, I don't have it on the spot.
I, I don't need it now, but I'd actually, I would, I would be interested in seeing that.
We, we purposely tried to give you a conservative estimate. The idea is to not sugarcoat a opposition paragraph, right? Because it doesn't do anybody any good to, to test a weak paragraph in opposition if, if there's going to be strong or relentless opposition. We want, we want to measure opposition that is real, that is current, that is comprehensive, to see if we can push a 65%. Where do they go? They did drop a little bit, and I think dropping from 65 to 57, there's, you know, there's a 10 to 12-point margin change of voters by hearing some opposition messages. But our goal is to give you, hopefully, a look of what voters, tracking them over a period of time in a questionnaire, and measuring their support or opposition based on additional information they have from both sides. Now, we, we talked more about some of the items where it was going to be spent in the projects, but we really tried to give a good, strong opposition paragraph, and I'd be glad to, that is, that is clearly available for you to look at.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. You know, I, I think I, I made this clear in the, I don't know when it would have been now, maybe two, two and a half months ago, when, when the initial suggestion that, that we go survey the community on this, you know, my position was, I, I didn't think we needed to spend the money for you to tell us, truthfully, what, what I think you've presented this evening, because I think at the end of the day, we still have to take an item to the voters, and we could have saved some money in the process. But I, I do feel slightly uncomfortable at the, at the fact that we're still not taking, it appears, we're still not taking action tonight to simply send or forward something to the ballot. We're going to continue to have what, what I would describe as, as a, as a public campaign funded by the city, to continue to win the hearts and minds of, of the voters of Bakersfield to plead our case. And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily, and this, this really, truthfully, doesn't have much to do with you, but you, you did a service, and, and I get that. But at some point, we've got to either pull the trigger or not, and send something to the ballot, and it, and it looks like we're going to, we're going to drag this out a little longer. And I'm not, I'm not sure there's a whole lot of value in that from a taxpayer's perspective. So I, I do feel uneasy about that. But it, it appears that there are also components of, of the survey that are not yet completed, like focus groups, which I'm assuming will occur sometime soon. And I, and I'm assuming we'll get the results of, of that stuff as well. I think the only other thing, you know, I would, I just, because it, it's come up a few times, and I feel like it's important to correct a misconception in your misconceptions slide, under common budgetary misconceptions. It appears to me there's a misconception that utility surcharge funds can only be used for road projects because of, of powers out of our control. But I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm pretty certain that there's actually an ordinance revocable by the folks sitting on this dais that might otherwise free that money up for other purposes. It's been utilized in one way because of that ordinance, and I get that. But I, I do believe it's a little disingenuous to suggest that the, the money's tied to one purpose when it's not. And, and the reason I say that is, you know, for the last few months, I, I think I've, I've suggested that in, as a part of this conversation, all options should be on the table, and no stone should be unturned. And I think there are, outside of slow or stagnating revenue growth, I think there are a lot of different reasons why we find ourselves in the position we're in, and PERS is one of them. But, but there are other things specifically related to things paid for, for example, with the utility surcharge, that I think have, have also gotten us to where we are. So, you know, if we're going to be honest, we got to be honest, and, and I just, I had to point out that this misconception slide would, appeared to be furthering a misconception that, that I think it's very important we understand, that in the future, this council actually has the potential and, and the power to free up more money to do something differently, should we ever feel the need to. Thank you.
Mr. Tandy?
Mayor, Councilmember Rivera is right that the usage of that money is designated by action of the city council. I should also point out that, starting in another jurisdiction, and then with a parallel suit filed in ours, there have been legal challenges to that revenue stream, and one of our defenses is the specific use of our money. The legalities of it get long and lengthy, but suffice it to say that I think I get asked the city attorney, and she would concur, that right now, under the current set of circumstances, it would be better from a legal defense perspective not to change the use of the money that's designated by council.
That's correct.
So I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Fairbank, just following along with what Councilmember Rivera asked about the opposition and the negative questioning, were there any questions along the lines of, do you think the city has done enough to cut government waste? We hear that sometimes from people on the outside. Were there questions along those lines?
I, I can't remember whether it's in the opposition argument, but usually we, we put, they haven't done enough to cut waste, they misspending dollars. I think we had a couple of questions here, I thought, on waste. I think there's a phrase in the opposition argument that I'll, I'll shoot to you. There's usually one of the basic, right? You don't spend money effectively, you waste money, so why are we going to give them more? I think that's included in the paragraph.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I, I think that my constituents that I talk to are, I hear the same thing that, that you're coming up with. Crime has increased. Prop 47, AB 109, has put more criminals on the streets, and we can't do anything about it. The homeless problem continues to grow, and we can do less and less about it. And those are frustrating things that, for my constituents, they would like addressed if possible. I appreciate staff's presentation on, you know, comparing where we're at with, with other cities. To answer the mayor's question, I, I think it's, when you look at the data, it's, it's obvious that we are efficient, we're not a wasteful governmental entity. And I don't think we have many choices to address the Councilmember Weir's concern about CalPERS. I, I also do not like the CalPERS situation, but I don't see, if we don't do anything, CalPERS cost continues to go up anyway. And so the way I see it is, you know, we, we have to pay CalPERS, and, and we decrease services, which means decreasing police staff, fire staff, parks, and rec. So I, I would move staff's recommendation to continue public outreach and to continue this discussion, if focus groups are a part of that, and, and educating the community. I make that motion.
Councilmember Freeman has rung in also.
One more question. You mentioned focus groups. Could you tell us what are the additional parts of, I guess, your contract in, I sort of thought tonight might be the culmination, but it sounds like you'd be doing more. Can you explain, since we're, you know, we're trying to show information, we're not advocating, and I would assume focus groups are still trying to simply discover what people think as opposed to move them in one direction or the other? Because honestly, we just, this was all about, what do the people think? Or we could make a huge mistake if we bias anything. Could you explain what more you are contracted to do for us?
Well, we're, again, we're trying to work with the city to make sure when we make a final recommendation, that it is a pretty solid recommendation, that if you decide to go ahead with this, you can pass it. I don't want to come, I don't want to come back and say, you know, you told us it was at 65, or whatever it was, and we didn't pass it. So one of our jobs is to work through focus groups, which are more qualitative kinds of research, to get, to get voters in a, in a room and spend a couple of hours with them, talking about some of these same issues, some of the PERS. We would bring up all the negative kinds of items and, and test some of these things. I think we're also proposing a, a tracking survey down the line, so that in June somewhere, that, that we would be able to track and, and give you a last minute look at where this measure stood after they heard a lot of the statewide measures. So in current, in the school districts, we did tracking surveys for them in June before they had to vote to put the measure on the ballot, and we simulated what else was on the statewide ballot. So as a voter, this, a tracking survey would basically start with the same, same likely voter, but would lead off with, are you supporting some of these statewide measures? If there's any county measure, if there's any other measure that's ahead of the city, we would ask them to vote on that, and then your city. So you, we're testing your voters' resolve after they've gone through a number of statewide measures, and testing ballot language. I think this ballot language that we tested, we actually can make some improvements on it. And so we would test different language and different words that, that might enhance that, that ballot language. But again, it's just a, a general sense of, of both qualitative and quantitative research to make sure, when we come back with a final recommendation to you, that, that we're pretty certain that your, the volatility in your voters is not such, even if there's opposition, will not be enough to pass this measure. That's the goal.
So the objective is, I guess, to confirm these, and to, again, we want to know what they think. In the end, we want to know what the community wants to do, not what I want to do, but what they want to do, and...
And we're just trying to measure that different ways. There's different ways of, you know, sometimes when you, you, you do a quantitative survey like this, you get in a focus group room, and you, and you espouse a little more your, we, we get a little more language, we get body language, we get phrases and, and concerns that they have, that you, we don't, we didn't, weren't able to address them all in a 20-minute survey over the phone or online. So it's just another way of trying to measure some of the same goals that you all want to figure out where your voters are on this.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm in support of continuing this process, you know, and the staff recommendation, basically, to keep exploring this.
Colleagues, any other comments before we go to vote? You have a, you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AA for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item 8C, transmitting changes to the proposed ordinance. An additional staff memorandum has been received regarding item 8J, transmitting an updated limited warranty letter from the vendor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked councilmembers, and nobody wants anything pulled, so I would move staff's recommendation to approve items 8A through 8AA.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearings, items 9A and 9B for approval. A staff memorandum has been received requesting that a motion on item 9B be postponed to allow time to address concerns raised today by the engineer of record. Recommends item 9B be opened, allow public comment, close the public hearing, and re-notice the item for a future date.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this session, section, is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearing in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. As our city clerk has mentioned, staff has requested that any decision on item 9B on tonight's agenda be postponed. While the public will have the opportunity to comment on the item tonight, speakers may wish to wait to provide comments until the item returns to the council for consideration. The item will be re-noticed at a future date. So at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing, items 9A and B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar Seeing none, at this time, the consent calendar public hearing, items 9A and 9B are now closed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to approve item 9A and to postpone item 9B. Can I make that in one motion?
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a referral to the Planning and Development Committee that we take a look at the portable recycling centers and how we address those in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, we're in the middle of experiencing the pineapple express, and I just want to give a big shout out to all of the city staff who are working hard to protect the city, police, fire, who are responding to several calls throughout the day-to-day, Public Works, who have been working diligently both yesterday and today, and overnight, to work on our storm drains and, and work on other relief efforts. So I really appreciate that. I think the rest of the council appreciates it as well. So thank you, staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
And as a quick follow-up to that, I'd also like to thank the fire department that is at the coast, helping to protect people from mudslides over there, too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Congratulations again to the budget team. Thank you again for your diligence and hard work there. So seeing nothing further, we stand adjourned at 7:24. and hard work there. So seeing nothing further, we stand adjourned at 7:24.